Welcome to City of Gulf Shores combined session today. We've got a council work session and a rescheduled regular council meeting. So that we've got two reasons. Next Monday is a holiday, plus we have an item of importance on our agenda tonight that needed to be voted on tonight. So we decided to combine it and not have a meeting next Monday, be off for Memorial Day, and do both of these tonight. So we'll go through this like we normally do when we do these combined. We'll get, have a discussion, then we'll answer questions, and then we'll vote. So with that, I'll call the meeting to order and ask Councilman Jones to lead us for the implication.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Y'all join me in thanks, please. Father God, there is so much going on around us. As we enter what we call our full-on tourism season, we ask for your grace. Grace, patience, and understanding that will, that not only, not only will we welcome visitors to our shores, through our roads, we will welcome them from the air. We ask for your blessing upon all travelers, that they would take care and exercise patience as well, that they arrive safely, vacation safely, and depart safely, to arrive home feeling better for having spent time here, and what we enjoy by your grace each and every day. Now we set about the business of our city and citizens, please be with us now as we consider all things for the greater good of all that we serve. In your son's name, we give thanks, and for all things, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you, Steve.
Yes, sir. Mr. Garrus?
Here.
Mr. Sinak? Oh, Mr. Harris?
Here.
I just crossed his name out. Mr. Harris? Dr. Viken?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mayor Craft.
Here.
First of all, Adam on the agenda tonight is approval of expense vouchers in the amount of $3,762,120.91. Anna?
Yes, sir. Excuse me. Of that total, $630,000 was for biannual debt service. Our capital projects totaled 1.8 million, including the pedestrian bridge, the Justice Center, and our Highway 59 widening project. We spent $472,000 on capital purchases, including a new bucket truck for the Public Works Department, and some fire equipment needed for their, their duties. Uh, let's see. Yeah, when you back all of that out, the operating expenses came to just over $531,000. And we did loan $327,000 to the airport for the terminal construction. Excuse me.
Thank you. Any questions on these expense vouchers, Anna?
Move for the approval of expense vouchers as presented?
Second. I have a motion as second to approve these expense vouchers as, as discussed. Only in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those expense vouchers are approved. And the next item is the approval of minutes. We have one set to continue to consider tonight. That's the regular council meeting of May the 12th.
Move for approval of, approval of the minutes of the May 12th regular council meeting?
Second.
I have a motion as second. Any discussion or changes? Only in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those minutes are approved. Next item is new business. We have two things tonight, the first of which is Resolution 6988, is authorize various board appointments. Toby?
Yes, sir. I have three gentlemen who have been nominated to be reappointed to their prospective boards. Sted McCullough to be reappointed to the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals, who serve a full term of four years, ending on June 8th, 2029. Glenn Kaiser to be reappointed to the Gulf Shores and Orange Beach Tourism Board, to serve a full term of four years, ending on June 28th, 2029. And Wade Bradford to the Gulf Shores Utilities Board, to serve a full term of six years, ending on June 5th, 2031. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Toby.
Yes, sir.
Anybody in the audience have any questions or comments on this, this procedure, this, this resolution? Counsel, any questions?
Motion to adopt Resolution 6988.
Second. I have a motion as second to adopt this resolution as presented. Any discussion or comment? Only in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 6988 is approved and adopted.
Thank you.
The next item is Resolution 6899. This is authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with Baldwin County Commission. Clint?
Yes, sir. So the issue is to authorize the mayor to execute an intergovernmental roadway construction agreement with the Baldwin County Commission to partner with the county on roadway improvements to County Road 6, also known as Oak Road East and West. A little background, the city and the county both recognize that the growth on County Road 6 has stressed the existing infrastructure, that there is a need for improvements in this location, and traffic improvements to County Road 6 would greatly benefit both city and county residents. A unique opportunity has been presented for the city and county to partner together to construct these improvements for both city and county residents, and this agreement is a true partnership between the city and the county, splitting the cost for design, permitting, construction, and C and I of the project. And so this is the existing conditions there at the intersection of Highway 59 and County Road 6. So as you know, there's currently only one westbound lane, one northbound turn lane, and one straight-through lane coming off of County Road 6. And northbound on Highway 59, there's currently only one westbound turn lane. And so this is the conceptual sketch of what those improvements would look like, and I'll go through those improvements. The first would be the addition of a second westbound lane to the second entrance of Colonial Traditions. The addition of a second eastbound lane from Thomas Plash Lane to Highway 59. The addition of a second westbound turn lane from Highway 59 northbound. Extending the southbound turn lane all the way to the entrance to Gulf Breeze RV Resort. And the addition of the third southbound lane on Highway 59 to tie into our Highway 59 widening project. And then intersection improvements on the east side to allow for future improvements to the east. And construction of a new eastbound turn lane from Highway 59 southbound. And then I've got just a blown up of the conceptual sketch there at the intersection, showing all the proposed lanes. And so the budget implications, if approved, the city and the county will split the cost of the project 50/50. We currently have $500,000 budgeted in account number 487965520 in this year's budget for design costs, and the remaining costs would be budgeted in future budgets. The preliminary cost estimate for the project is approximately $11 million. Therefore, the city's cost would be approximately 5.5. And staff recommends authorizing the mayor to execute the intergovernmental roadway construction agreement with the Baldwin County Commission. And I'll be glad to answer any questions, and we also have several guests from the county engineering department and the county commission here, if, if they would like to speak, or if you guys would like to ask any questions.
We're delighted to have Commissioner Gruber and Commissioner Underwood here with us. Thank you for joining us. Frank Lundey and our county commissioner, and Mark Ackerman, former city employee. I don't know who of you wishes to kind of talk through this or not, but we'd love to hear. I know the community would like to hear some of the, this program that you've got going, that we were basically honored to be invited to participate in.
Mayor, counsel, and citizens of Gulf Shores, this is a rare opportunity. We have been looking at ways to make improvements in our infrastructure program, sharing with our municipalities that would help both county and cities in keeping traffic moving. We've got a program called 30 Cube, and it's, we've got about 30 projects, and it's over 30, it's gonna be about a 30-year length that pay all this out. So we have been, we've met a couple of times and talked about this, and luckily, you know, I think Gulf Shores is gonna be the first one to sign it up on this, what we're doing. And I commend y'all for allowing us to partner with y'all on this project. This is a very important project. You know, we added, you know, to the cause the other, not, uh, two weeks ago when we opened up the County Road 6 boat launch, which is beautiful, by the way, and it's gonna get utilized a lot, because that's the only boat launch on Moncksky River. That is, that is, you know, it's not private. So it's, it's gonna get some work out. And, you know, I think with y'all, the team coming together and making this a project that we can all receive something from it. I'm looking forward to that, and I thank each and every one of y'all for agreeing upon, I hope y'all agree upon, and, you know, and, and, and let's get this project moving and make it safer for our, our traveling people and our citizens. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. And thank you all of our visitors that are here. We're glad you're here with us, and really a great opportunity for everybody. Commissioner Underwood?
Yes, thank you so much. It is my pleasure to be here, and I'm so thankful that you guys are considering this. I hope that you agree to do it. Back in January, I believe, was when I got the call where they said, "We have come up with this, this plan, and we think you guys should, should really consider it." And so basically, what 30 Cubed is, is 6 million per year that the county's gonna budget over the next five years, so that by 2030, that we would be able to, be able to, and then then the 30 other million would be the match that comes from the municipalities. And all 14 are welcome to participate, so that's where your 330s come from, and that's where the 30 Cube name came from. And I ran for office back in 2018 to have a better collaboration between our cities and the county. For a long time, I had heard about this us-against-them attitude of some cities and some, you know, persons, and I didn't want that to be. And so I think this is a great opportunity. I think we have worked well with many of the other municipalities in the county. Those come to us many, many times wanting us to do projects solely within their, their jurisdiction. This needs to make sense, where it meets the county's strategic goals. Our, our number one strategic goal is infrastructure, and under that is increasing capacity and increasing connectivity of county roads. And we all know that the roads have to connect. They connect with city roads, they connect with state roads, they connect even with federal roads that the state takes care of. So we are just so delighted that somebody has come forth. It's a first-come, first-served. And the other beauty about this thing is, is that, um, wow, it shows your backside in that thing. Anyhow. Sorry. I think everybody laughed, but anyhow. Forget what I was gonna say. All right, so therefore, I did it. There's not gonna be all the, the red tape and the bureaucracy that comes along with a lot of these grants that we see so many times. So a lot of times, whenever you apply for grants, and we all try to get money from the federal government, we try to get money from the state, and everywhere that we can get money, but this way, we won't have to wait forever, and you don't have to spend all that extra money to meet all of the red tape. I come from the outside world. I'm not a bureaucrat by, by trade. Forgive me for all you that work for the government, but it, it drives me up the wall when you have to deal with all the bureaucracy and all the red tape. So we figured out that this would be a good, a good plan, that we could work together with the cities and the county, and get things done in a more efficient and, and better way. So thank you for your consideration. I hope you guys think it's a good idea as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Frank, I think this was your idea, and I don't know if you have any words you wanna share, because you're the first one that came to us and presented it with Mark, and so, but I, this concept is unique and really amazing.
Well, it is very unique, and it's very innovative. I can't take credit for the idea. It was very much a team effort. We have a lot of people in this room that contributed, and, and we brainstormed ideas. And the commission did come forward with a strategic plan back in 2021. There's, as we all know, there's a lot of infrastructure needs throughout the county, and that, that county-city interface where the, where the two junctions meet is the, the top area where we see the, the problem points, the sticking points. So we knew what the problems were, we just had to come up with some good solutions, and we knew that if we could keep it local, we have good professionals here at the local level, and, and through local leadership, local funding, we could cut out a lot of red tape and bureaucracy, as Commissioner Underwood said, and we knew we could get things done in a timely manner. So just very excited about this program. It's, it's not only the first of its kind ever in Baldwin County, but it's the first of its kind in the state of Alabama. And right now, we're not aware of anywhere in the nation that has a program, an infrastructure program of this magnitude and this setup and with this framework. So this is an excellent project to kick it off. This is exactly the type of project we had in mind when, when we envisioned the program. So we're, we're just glad to be here and glad for the opportunity to come before you.
Thank you, sir. Really appreciate it very much. Anybody in the audience that have any questions or comments about this before we consider and, and take action on it? Counsel? That is Resolution 6989. Any questions or comments first?
Move for the adoption of Resolution 6989 and waive its reading?
Second.
I have a motion as second to adopt this resolution as presented. Any discussion or comment? Only in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 6989 is approved and adopted. Thank you, counsel. Great, that is all we have on business, on, on new business for tonight. We've got a few updates we want to share with you. Did Jesse make it in from the airport?
Yes, don't say it.
Wednesday, we have first flight ceremony with the first flight coming in from Allegiant, flying in here with a plane load of visitors coming to town. They'll be landing here around 12:30 on Wednesday, Wednesday just after lunch, and it'll be kickoff the season of air travel from six different destinations around the southeast to Gulf Shores. And that same plane will load back up and fly back to Knoxville Saturday evening, taking a group of locals back to Knoxville, and, and we're delighted to get that started. What an amazing opportunity that we have now. We're talking about transportation, but the more we can get people here and get them distributed out to the resorts without them having to drive their car, it will help us all with our transportation strategies and problems and issues that we have. Really delighted to have that. We have one of our Airport Authority members here, Beth Geller. Anything you wanna say? Because you're, you're not just Airport Authority, you're also our tourism partner. Well, we'd love for you to. Not putting you under pressure.
Sure. You can't get off the spot or anything.
Nothing you can analyze.
That's right, hopefully. No, this is, I don't want to take all my comments that have already written out for Wednesday, but so exciting. I just think it's great, it's gonna introduce our destination to a lot of new people, encourage people to come, encourage all of our residents to fly out to new places, too. I know you've already booked plenty of tickets. My goddaughter's coming from Cincinnati, can't wait. So it's just gonna be a new way for people to get here, a new way for people to find out about us. I think the people that love us and know us from those destinations will come back more frequently because of the airplane travel and ability to do that quickly, and it's, it's just gonna be another really great mode of transportation. We're very excited.
Very much so. Thank you, Beth. And the additional dream is that we're doing this is through the summer. This, these six destinations, two flights to each of them for the, the rest of the summer. We're hopeful that we will be able to grow that into something else in, in the fall and winter, and, and bringing some things in from, for winter visitors, and expand our tourism season throughout the year with a way to get here other than driving your car. And we're hopeful that we can get the kind of impact to Allegiant of passenger sales, tickets bought, that they will decide that they want to expand that to a further, further opportunity. So it's a real good first start. So thank you for that. And that's, like I said, that's all of our business now. I had a couple of things. We just finished Sand in My Boots Music Festival, and I thought, given it was such a big crowd, that I would ask our police chief, Dan Nettameyer, to talk about the, the police impact, and then I've asked Chief Sealy to talk about from the fire department. It's all public safety type, understanding.
Yes, sir, Mayor. Different crowd this year. Our total, our total arrests this year were 37. 20, or 20 of those were felonies, 17 were misdemeanors. Those are general disorderly-type crimes. I can tell you the dynamic of the crowd this year was off-duty police officers, and I, and I'll tell you how I know that. We had a stream of off-duty police officers who came in the station today to exchange patches. They were asking the officers through the weekend, "Do you have a patch?" "No, come by the station tomorrow." And they were, they were streaming in. We had firefighters, teachers, nurses, schoolte, you know, schoolteachers, school administrators, all these, this was the type of crowd that we had, we had in town this weekend. Very well behaved. As you know, every year, we go out and liaison with all the area businesses there around the, the festival, and I did that again this year. And, and just today, I had lunch at the Beach House, and Eric at the Beach House told me that yesterday, she, they've been open for 10, over 10 years. Yesterday, they exceeded their all-time best day by over $3,000 a day with, with the revenue that they had generated in there, and the type of crowd, they were happy, they were joyous, they weren't troublemakers, and, and all in all, from their perspective. And, and the other businesses around there, Mikey Steamer's, Bahama Bob's, just name one. Like I said, we go, we go out there, we don't forget about them during the festival. We take care of them, too. They're part of the, they're outside the footprint, but they're still part of the city. On the side, the general calls for service were nothing, nothing out of the ordinary. Of course, we, we did, we didn't do this alone. We, we had our local law enforcement partners, we had federal partners there. A lot of federal partners came out this year. We had Dan Bongino in town, if you hadn't heard, he was, he was there this weekend. And a lot of protection detail on that, a lot of extra resources required of us to handle that, and it was handled without, without an issue or a tick in any way.
Thank you, Dan.
Chief Sealy?
Good afternoon. Don't be looking at my backside. You got me conscious of conscious. Want to give you a little background on kind of how we do things before I give you some numbers. We have a on-scene, onsite hospital that's manned by Baldwin Health. And outside of that, out, all throughout the, the compound, or the footprint of the festival, we have three first aid tents that are staffed by coastal nurses, nursing students that have a proctor and some firefighters there with them. And then we have 10 strike teams from Fire Department that either on UTV or on foot. And so we have different levels of, of being able to get to people. And we also have 911 dispatchers on site. So anything in that footprint, those calls come straight to them on site, and they can, they handle where our people, they know where they're at. It's very, very impressive how they, how they get it done. But I think it's best to start with the numbers. I may not be accurate, Grant may have better numbers than me, but rough numbers, I think last year, we had, over three days, we had 80,000. This year was right at 100,000. So numbers went up 20%. But if you look at our hospital, the, the total patients in the hospital on site were 159 this year, 179 last year. So it went down, even though we had more patrons. Our strike team contacts were up about 100 to 321. How many we, one of the things we did, because we didn't want to overwhelm the, the hospital there, is so many heat emergencies or heat issues, we put tents outside of the stages on both ends, and we had those manned, and so we'd just pull, people with just heat problems, we'd pull them out of the crowd instead of taking them to the hospital and, and sending them all the way back. We'd just pull them outside, right outside of the arena and, and rehydrate them, cool them down, and put them back out. Unless they had a more severe, and then we'd take them to the triage tent. Those, those tents worked well. I think that contributed to the less, fewer people going to the hospital tent. So we had 160 visit those tents. So it was a pretty impressive weekend. We only transported out of the festival to the main hospital, 12 this year, 10 last year. So it's pretty, pretty similar, even though the numbers went up. Couldn't do it without all the city employees, everybody that, we said that this morning at staff meeting, and I'll reiterate it, the, the Police Department, the county, the sheriff, just so many, you ask, anything we ask for, they, they did. It's just, that's a tribute to our city and their attitudes and willingness to go above and beyond and make things happen. So be glad to answer any questions if that was any confusion at all.
Chief, any questions to anybody? Thanks, sir. This, this was the last year of the current contract with, with the music festival. We have no other events contractually obligated to. We've been asked to consider doing more, and we, we've not decided what to do with that, other than we'll be listening to a pitch by the Hangout Group and the, their partners tomorrow. And before we, and we will analyze what they're asking, and then we will be approaching the community within the next couple of weeks to try to have some type of meeting to get public input. Here's, here's what they're proposing, here's what we need to understand that the community wants, and, and we'll talk about the money that was collected by then, we'll know exactly what the impact for the finances will, will be. We'll know that, and then we'll have to work together as a community to decide, do we want to keep doing this or not? It would have to be like we were this year. It would have to be, it would be absolutely this, this same group, which was, I made the analogy yesterday, and again this morning at our staff meeting. In years past, we had a group of teenagers here with their daddy's credit card. Folks here this year had their own credit card. They were that age group, they had their cred, their own credit card. They would take, they were not hoping daddy bails them out if they get in trouble. They were on their own and taking, they were that much different in age, and that's the reason you hear so much better quality of an audience and so much, so much less problems. Now, we had heat issues, and you're gonna have that, it doesn't matter how old you are, but if you get out in, in that, on that beach in the sun, that'll happen. So again, the community's gonna have to help us decide where we go forward from here. It has traditionally created, added somewhere around a million dollars of net money to the city. We get reimbursed for the expenses we spend, which the Hangout reimburses the money that we spend to support it. And, but that's net money that we have to build other things with. Is that the way, the way we need to get it? That's to be determined by the community, and this council will engage that and kind of get some input and figure where we go from there, so. Counsel, anybody else have anything they want to add to? Yes?
Mayor, just want to remind everybody that we're, we're excited. We'll be graduating the sixth class from Gulf Shore City Schools tonight at 7 o'clock at the amphitheater. You're certainly all invited, as well as the general public. Seating's limited to about 10,000 people, so I think that we can squeeze you all in there. But it, it's an exciting time. We have an incredible class of approximately 200 graduates from Gulf Shore City Schools and Gulf Shores High School, and it's a great evening of celebration, and we'd love to, if y'all can make it, we'd love to, we'd love to have you.
Thank you. Clint, it looks like Highway 59 is wrapping up. Will you kind of give us where we are on the schedule from the bridge south?
Yes, so south of the bridge, everything is, is pretty much done. They've been cleaning up, getting all the cones moved north. We will have to come back and do the, the final strapping, but so that does mean that the contractor's gonna be moving north of the bridge. We're gonna have some nighttime lane closures, starting Thursday night, just to do some saw cutting to get ready for the, the widening north of the bridge. But we'll get that, that out to the public. And then also, we are, we're paving today and tomorrow on Waterway East to get past the entrance to the airport. So, so that's going on today and tomorrow.
When do you expect the striping to be done? Is that gonna be before the Memorial Weekend kickoff, or?
No, we just repaved that, that lane last week, so we have to wait. Alda usually wants us to wait about a month, but minimum of two weeks from when that asphalt goes down. So we'll, we'll work it up, but that'll be in nighttime when that happens.
I don't know if the final plan for striping is any different than what's out there today. This temporary, but we seem to have quite a few cars in that far west lane that aren't recognizing that that becomes a turn lane only at Fort Morgan, and then they're, Fort Morgan, then they're stuck in that lane and can't get over. So I don't know if there's opportunity to back up some striping and arrows further back to the north to give them some better indication there, but.
Yes, and I'm gonna be meeting with, with Volker and the contractor out there before they do that permanent strapping. What we've talked about doing is, so right now, the sign is at about Arby's with the right turn only sign and, and that arrow. We're probably gonna add another one even farther back and put straight arrows on the two other lanes is, is the plan right now.
A lot of help. Thank you.
Do you know if the state has made any determination about what we do with that third lane on the bridge? Would we think we will, that, they'll want to open that up without a pedestrian bridge being complete? Do you think, do we think we'll open it up before the pedestrian bridge? I would imagine.
I, I think we'll have to, because once we get the widening done on the north side, we're not gonna be able to open that up until we restructure the bridge. So, so I think that will happen sooner rather than later.
Yeah, the topic that we're talking about, anybody with any questions? We got Clint at the microphone, and he's the one that's managing that, so anybody with anything related to that or anything, you can come up. We have to see. So I'll open it up to anybody with anything that you got on your mind. Yes, Angie?
A couple weeks ago, I came to talk about the property on the other side, on the water side at the on the water side of the, on canal. And I did receive a letter, Scott, thank you, about the, we needed to check to see if there was anything we needed to know about erosion control there before we did any cutting. And I just wanted to see if, has anyone checked on that? Or is there someone that I can contact? Or, because now, they're, you know, starting to tear up the pavement, and there's a dumpster there. So, it's just gonna get harder and harder for us to be able to clear that property. Again, we're doing that on our, you know, we're doing it, we're doing it at our cost. You know, the city's property and then the core property on the other side. So, just wanted to see if there's anything I can do to help move that along.
Scott?
No, no, we were working, reached out to the board, make sure everything's, we'll be back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Angie. Yes, sir. Good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon. Mark Ackerman's in the house. Can you believe this? Last time we were in this room together, I was calling you a class act. And you are, sir, and we missed a hell of it. I'm gonna compliment you, and I'm gonna compliment what you support. Thank you for all your help, the beach, I see y'all, whether you're helping people or getting things straightened out down there. We appreciate the job. What we need from you coming in the future and the board is we need that fire station on the east side. We do not have a fire station from the beach, totally. And we got a lot of senior citizens on the east side, I'm one of them. Thank you. Chief? You're gonna make an excellent chief. Nice to know you so far, and we're gonna work together. I'm gonna fix to get into something, and we'll need your help. And to all the other city employees, we appreciate your, Noel's team, everybody else. Okay, we're gonna go back to Coastal Gateway. This is my fourth time up here asking the speed to be at 35 miles an hour. Citizens should not have to be putting up with this. Terrence, can you please show video that happened last night? Times three, four, or five times a week. This gentleman lives in Riley Farms. He's a resident, and we're sick and tired of it. We should be able to enjoy our, whether we got a front porch, back porch, some of us have two, as far as the front and the back. It's just gotten ridiculous out there. We've got a school coming in. I understand you met with the HOA craft farms, reference to the soccer fields coming in. We've gotta get a grip on this speed before everything comes in here. But that is just totally unacceptable for this city. And we didn't have that when we had a two-lane road. So, please help us with this. We need your help. Thank you very much. Gentlemen in the back of the room that'll be helping us with that, we're paying attention. And so were we. Thank you. Anybody else, anything? Commissioners, county employees, thank you for being here. Thank you for the opportunity to work together. It's a big deal, and we appreciate it so much. And we'll be anxious to work with you again when you need something. Thank you. Is there a motion we adjourn?
No.
We stand adjourned. Thank you for being here.